Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're going to start our meeting. And one of the things that I do in the beginning is to thank everybody for being here tonight. It looks like we got a pretty good crowd. So we greatly appreciate all of y'all coming out for this wonderful meeting that we're going to have. And at this time, I would ask Reverend Max Taylor if he would come forward and offer an implication for us.
Thank you, Reverend. We can't let this break.
My heavenly Father, we bow before you on this September 11th. Remembering 22 years ago, the horror that we saw, experienced in that act. We thank you that you continue to lead our country to be a place of freedom, to be a group of people that get off the deck and go and do whatever we need to do, whatever we need to do. So we thank you for inspiring our country. You continue to help those hold on to the values that you taught us of life, liberty, and happiness, and all people are created equal. I thank you for this city council and for their work in looking after the citizens in the business of the community. We know that they're about service to this community, and it's not self-service. It's service for the good of the community. Thank you for all of our first responders, for their dedication to go in ahead of any kind of danger to take care of us. They're just always before us, but especially on September 11th. So give us your peace and grace and help us as a community to continue to live together in the judgment of your kingdom and the world. We pray in Christ's name, and everybody say it.
You will rise, please, and I'll ask Frank Lasky to lead us in our place of worship.
Thank you. So you face the flag. If you're a veteran, you're more than welcome to salute. If not, put your hand over the right hand. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Frank is going to say a few words for us on this Patriot Day today, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to be here. I find that to be a privilege to be here. If you all are not aware, today is 9/11, Patriot Day. We had a nice ceremony at the Veteran Memorial Park today, and we had a great few speeches made out there who we honored. We were pleased to see the mayor leader, and Jim was there. So I'm just going to repeat the speech that I made out there today. Today, we honor our first responders, armed forces, and the extraordinary brave Americans we lost on September 11th, 22 years ago. Patriot Day gives us time to reflect on the devastating terror attacks that took around 3,000 lives. We remember those who we lost and give thanks to those brave first responders who put their lives on the line. September 11th did not end the American losses. We lost over 4,000 in Iraq war and over 2,000 in Afghanistan. As the conflict ended in Afghanistan, how easily we forget, we lost more brave souls because of poor leadership with 13 armed forces that consist of the Marines, the Navy, and the Army involved in that bombing. Please take a moment today to consider what we stand for as a nation and how we work together to make the world a better place for all. As I am, here are a few quotes for this day. Peter Marshall said, candidly, "May we think of freedom not as a right to do as we please, but as an opportunity to do what's right." Philip Randolph stated, "We will stand by the right. We will stand by the truth. We will live, we will die for the red, white, and blue." An unknown artist stated, "Freedom is never given, it is won." And lastly, we should never forget, no matter what battle, no matter what veteran, no matter what situation we have, we have to remember those. And if I can, I think it's important that I read off the names that died in Afghanistan, the 13. We had U.S. Marine Sergeant Rosenberg. We had U.S. Marine Corporal Lopez. We had Marine Nicole. We had Marine Lance Corporal McCullen. We had Marine Schnitz. We had Marine Epizado. We had Navy Soviet Marine Sergeant Hoover. Marine Corporal Page. Army Kraus. U.S. Army Corporal Sanchez. U.S. Marine Sergeant Gee. And U.S. Marine Thompson. Because of all these losses that we've had, not only just for 9/11, for any veteran that loses his life for our country and does what they have to do, what I'd like to do now, and if I'm allowed, we'd like to have a moment of silence for those 3,000 and all those that we have lost that are serving and why you're here today is what freedom is all about. So can we have a moment of silence? Thank you for your time. Again, thank you for being here today.
Thank you for being here. Counsel, you have in front of you our agenda. And take a motion at this time to adopt the agenda as presented.
Salute.
In a second, please. Motion and a second to adopt. Any other questions by council?
Do we have two items we want to move?
Those will be on the consent agenda, not this agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. And the agenda is adopted. We have our consent agenda, counsel, and we have had a request from our admin committee to remove an item from the consent agenda until our next regular session to go back to committee. So I'm going to start with Ann and Jim, and let them tell us about this request.
What we've asked for is the job description based on where the plan are positioned till we go back to committee. I think we've had some questions about that. We want to make sure we get that right before we post that. So we're going to try to get that done as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Counsel, you have your amended consent agenda in front of you. I intend to take a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Salute.
Say aye.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. And the consent agenda amended is adopted. Under new business, item one, swearing in of Jasper Police Officers Houston Adams and Erica Schrader. We'll ask Chief Matt Docus to bring this to us. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We haven't done this in a while, so we can do it tonight. So we'd like to take some time this evening to recognize two new officers for the Jasper Police Department. Calling up is Houston Adams and Erica Schrader. Will you please step away? And although Houston has not been here very long, he has already got a nickname. Daniel, we don't even know where he came from. So Houston Adams started with the Jasper Police Department on June 5th, 2023. Officer Adams came to us from Royston PD. He has been in law enforcement for approximately two years. Erica Schrader started with Jasper Police Department September 5th, 2023. Officer Schrader came to us from Groveland PD. She has been in law enforcement for approximately six years. Both of these officers have completed or is completing the Department's skill training program, which ranges from anywhere from four to 14 weeks. We're excited to have Officer Adams and Officer Schrader as our new members of the Jasper Police Department family. At this time, I'd like to swear these two officers in, and then we'll have Officer Schrader's husband come up and pin her badge on, and Assistant Chief Davis will come up and pin Officer Adams on. Y'all will raise your right hand. I, such your name.
Mr. Adams.
A police officer of Jasper Police Department do solemnly swear or affirm that during my continuance in said office, I will to the best of my skills and ability faithfully uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and in all cases conform to and enforce the laws of the United States, the state of Georgia, and the Charter of ordinances in Jasper. I will execute the orders of my superiors in all cases, comply with the rules and regulations governing the city of Jasper Police Department. I will report any violation thereof to my superior. I will not prosecute the innocent, nor shield the guilty for prosecution or punishment, nor will I be influenced into discharge of my duty by fear, favor, or affection, reward, or the hope thereof. In all my acts and doings, I will be governed by the rules and ordinance applicable to the Jasper Police Department. So help me God. I don't hurt him. Sure. It's going to hurt me a lot worse than it hurts you. Sorry. I would. It'll catch you. All right, well, we don't know, we shouldn't. Thank you.
I'd like to remind everyone here, if you would, please sign in if you have not done so already. Under new business, item two, consideration of approval of proclamation for Jasper Home Depot Day. And I have a proclamation to read today about that. So Jasper Home Depot Day, September 18th, 2023. Whereas Jasper Home Depot has provided personnel and materials to renovate Jasper Fire Station Number One and therefore improve the working environment of Jasper firefighters. Whereas Jasper Home Depot has donated materials to update Jasper Police Department headquarters and therefore improve the working environment of Jasper police officers. Whereas Jasper Home Depot managers and associates, you will excuse me for the pronunciation of these if I miss what I mean, Steve Reniger, Brian Edwards, Robin Leonard, Robin Wilson, Ashley Bridges, Monica Cherry, Ted Vickery, and Sam Masary donated their time to assist with renovations to Jasper Fire Station Number One. Whereas Alyssa Cates, representing City Group, assisted with renovations to Jasper Fire Station Number One in conjunction with Jasper Home Depot in both. Now therefore, the city of Jasper does hereby proclaim September 18th, 2023, as Jasper Home Depot Day in the city of Jasper and does commend this observance to all citizens. The city of Jasper does further recognize Steve Reniger, Brian Edwards, Robin Leonard, Robin Wilson, Ashley Bridges, Monica Cherry, Steve Vickery, Sam Masary, and Alyssa Cates, and thanks them for providing this community service and commends them for helping the Jasper community so proclaimed by the Jasper City Council on September 11th of 2023. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, we'd like to have Mike in your booth, please. Ma'am?
Yes, could y'all stand behind the home depot?
Yeah. Thanks, you all.
Y'all move up. Very sure of that.
This is the way.
Jill, I can't see you.
We're trying to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want me to say that?
You're awesome. I appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
Darren, I'll see y'all later.
Yeah, I'll play in a few days, as always.
Okay, new business, item number three, consideration of amending our wine specialty shop ordinance. We'll ask our city managers, Sonya and Mr. Williams, to bring this to us. Sonya.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. So what you have for you is a request from First Mountain Tasting Room to amend the specialty wine ordinance or allow a variance. This is a request for your direction to provide to staff to ask our city attorney to amend it if you choose to do so. You are not amending an ordinance tonight. So their request is to be able to sell beer from a can and by the glass on premises for consumption and retail for off-premise consumption. Their justification is they sell wine by the glass for consumption, and they would like, and they also sell wine by the bottle for off-premises, and that creates some kind of confusion for some of their patrons. So their request is to amend the ordinance to also sell beer from a can package for, to be considered off-premises. So staff is looking for direction from City Council on whether or not you would like to explore this amendment or variance per their request. And if you do want to explore it, then we will work with Mr. Siphon for necessary changes to come back to you for a vote, but this isn't a vote to actually change an ordinance tonight.
Discussion.
It couldn't be consumed out, like for our events, cans would not be allowed to be consumed outside because of the, I think the ordinance says they have to be in cups.
That's correct.
Clear.
That's correct.
Well, this wouldn't change that.
Let me say, Mayor, that I think we instituted an entertainment district in the downtown area. So in theory, if they opened a can in the shop and poured the beer
Into a container.
Into a container, then they could walk outside of the establishment within the entertainment district and drink that beer, you know, in the sidewalk or wherever within the entertainment district.
Which was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure we were walking around with cans, consuming from cans.
But in their ordinance, and I think that's what we have to look at, if say, no cans, they can do draft, and they can sell it in a grower, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, they can sell basically keg beer in a grower. You know, the original concept was basically you were allowing a wine package store to also be a wine specialty shop and give them additional avenues to make revenue, you know, and have a cigar room if they wanted to have that. Under the current ordinance, they still have to have like 60% wine package sale or wine-related merchandise, which I see as an aerator or, you know, wine stoppers or whatever else. So the growers was an attempt to recognize that we were going to allow them to be able to serve. You know, what we got to think about, at least with my experience with alcohol, once you start loosening the rules, then, you know, suddenly everybody wants to be a wine specialty shop because they think, hey, I can sell beer and wine and I don't have to have food sales. And so my understanding is then that the councils often didn't want to have a pure bar per se, only sells beer, wine, and distilled spirits. And so, you know, everybody else were making be a restaurant to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits to drink. So the wine specialty shop is already an exception, and it's that balance of where do we draw that wine? And if you draw that wine, you know, how are people going to try to use it to their advantage, to their legal advantage? So, you know, that's the push-pull to me is y'all have indicated previously that you didn't want just a pure bar. And so when you start loosening these restrictions, you know, the first person that may abide by them, but at least my experience is you always get somebody that's looking for a way around the rules. And so that would be my concern. But so I think Ms. Janies is correct. We're kind of looking for guidance about where y'all want to draw that wine.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Please.
I'm a little uncomfortable having much discussion without any form of motion on the table, but since that does seem to be our process tonight, I don't know anything about what they want. I'm a council member, I know the folks personally. I've not had any conversation, there's no documentation that I have that they presented a formal, not a request, but specifically, I think they should, I think there should be a process, and I hope that's not too surprising to y'all. I think this council is here to make decisions, and I don't mean to offend, but this sounds, this is a little bit like committee work, and I think we should have a process that protects all of our businesses. We've done a great job, in my opinion, in establishing some pretty unique businesses in town. Several of them are represented tonight. I don't know whether we notified them in any way, shape, or form about this, or whether they heard from hearsay, or whether they are so attuned to what's going on in our city that they came by their own will because they recognized this was on the agenda. So again, my recommendation would be we come up with some sort of process. I don't think you ought to be doing variances on your laws. I mean, I'd like to know how you get those, because I would, I probably forgot a way to, you know, make that work.
And I think we all had the discussion when we did this, the uniqueness of what we have right now with the distillery and the brewery and the wine specialty shop. So I think that's what we were trying to get at, like he said, to not be a bunch of bars in the town, was to have the uniqueness that we've got right now with the combination of different things, so.
But there's a process.
But we did have a process.
And I think there should be a process, either citizen-driven or council-driven. We can't be so dogmatic in our ordinances that we say, well, we're not going to change an ordinance, but there should be some sort of format, whether that's a citizen comes to one of us and we get energized to organize this, or whether a citizen wants to energize himself. If that's the case, I think that we have organizations in place where they can vet amongst themselves that they're proposing, and that's kind of how I feel about it. I'm not saying I wouldn't do it, I'm not going to commit to whether I would or not because I'm not going to be asked to make a decision, so.
We've made, which committee would this go to?
It actually came for the Finance and Administration Committee, and that committee chose to move it up to the City Council level for discussion.
So let me ask the question, where does the other city, I mean, the business district go to? Doesn't always come to admin, does it? For the ordinances?
For alcohol, yes.
Just for, okay.
Yes, and this involves alcohol.
Yeah, no, I agree, but I was just wondering how the other ones will be doing.
Mayor, if I may, Mayor, Counsel, what we did previously this year, a long, well-worth effort of reviewing ordinances and placing the places, focused more around development, and that came out of the more inquiry. We had multiple discussions, we had multiple revamps. We contracted outside firm to come in and assist us with professional services. This is a much smaller, unique situation. I don't have an issue with the standard process. If we are looking for any type of motion, if it's required legally since it's on the agenda, you know, I would move for that to be placed back to the Development Committee for a standard process to be created. Once that process is in place, if that ordinance needs to go through that process, plus the committee again to handle alcohol, that's fine. I think the conundrum we're facing is we don't have that standard process in place. And so if your Development Committee can tackle that with the help of legal, I think that process can be standardized.
Development rather than administration? What's your administration, you can't, Counsel?
It depends on where you want that standard process to come from. I don't mind it being on development, as we throw much towards admin. If you'd like it, you can certainly have it. But when we're talking about variances and amendments, the majority of those variances and amendments, in my opinion, fall in the Development Committee. When it comes to commercial and residential, this would just be standardizing a process for the variance and amendment, not specifically towards that ordinance. It would be a standard process for all, and since the majority of those would fall in the Development Committee, it may assist us with administration and legal, building that standard process.
Well, and it did come to admin, and Sonya's right, we moved it because I was comfortable with that, making that decision. So what do you think?
Well, so from an operational perspective, staff perspective, what we can do is work with Mr. Siphon on making some changes to the ordinance in consideration of this request, and we can bring it back before council, and y'all can vote it up or down.
I think what we're asking for is a process.
Is a process, not a change.
I'm not saying you can't do that, but I think above and beyond what we're asking for is a process where the next person that comes along and wants to do a variance on an ordinance, and just on the surface of it, and I've not seen this in committee, my answer to, can I get a variance on a law? not seen this in committee, my answer to, can I get a variance on a law? I would, I would, I think the answer should be no, you know, unless there's some sort of extenuating circumstances, which we have documented in our building ordinances. There's certain things that variances are allowed. They're pretty onerous, and I think they should be. But I think we need a process. It's not, this isn't the only ordinance we're having issues with throughout our community, and there's no real process, um, where if a citizen or one of us wants to change that ordinance, that we can go, we can just go boom, 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 and then it either gets to committee or gets to us without having to come to us and then go back to, to Mr. Siphon if that makes any sense.
Well, Siphon, work with Mr. Siphon to develop that process and run it by the, uh, the finance and admin committee.
Yeah, we bounced it up here. What I suggest that, uh, council bounce it back down to administrative, administrative finance and let us work with staff.
I was not comfortable with, with making the change.
I understand. It's a, I mean, it's a, it's a kind of a sticky cookie, and it's also kind of, so.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, it's just a process, yes. Yeah, 'cause you're right. We've got some other people that are talking about some ordinances that need to be looked at, and we just need to give them an option of another form of a lack.
We can, uh-
Do you understand what we're asking here?
Yes, sir.
And for building, we have that process. It's built into our ordinances.
Correct.
Well, we, we, there's a variance process.
Yes, there is.
You mean?
This would be under the zoning ordinance and in the zoning code, so it would be something that would be handled there as far as changing the wine specialty or asking for an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
That sort of sounds like it needs to go to development then, hearing that.
I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's what our director thinks. And that's what Sonya recommended, so.
Okay, let's let it back down to the development committee. Let them go through their process with Mr. Siphon.
And we will also let our finance and admin review it before it goes up to council.
And any other council members, what do you want to do? Thank you.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Okay, item four. Consideration approval of Main Street streetscape lighting. And we're really interested in this, Ms. James.
Absolutely. Uh, so we have, um, city council for the duration that I've been here have, um, had a desire to upgrade the Main Street lighting, um, in various conversations that we have had. So I reached out to Georgia Power, and just so happens we have a Georgia Power expert, um, who recommended a program that Georgia Power has that assists, uh, local governments and communities in their downtown lighting. And so I reached out and had a couple of meetings with Georgia Power, and we, we went through and we reviewed the thirty-three light poles that are downtown. And so Georgia Power, uh, went back, ran some numbers, and looked at some ways that we could, uh, implement some cost savings. The initial thought was it was going to be in the six-figure amount to replace all of the thirty-three downtown, uh, light poles. Fortunately, they were able to, um, work it out to where they can, we can keep the existing light poles, and they can paint them, update them, um, upgrade them, fix, uh, electrical, uh, sockets, and, um, do all of that, and assume the maintenance of those light poles, uh, for two options. They provided two options. Option number one is no prepayment, and it would take the current downtown monthly bill from four hundred and seventy, five hundred dollar range to one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Or option two, the city could do a thirty-one thousand dollar repayment. They would upgrade all the infrastructure. They would change out the, the lighting fixtures, uh, for thirty-one thousand dollars, and that would increase our monthly bill from four hundred and seventy to five hundred dollars per month to seven hundred and eighty-one dollars per month, which would, um, which would mean they would start maintaining at that increased level. So, uh, the staff is looking to city council, um, to either, um, approve or disapprove this, and if so, staff would recommend going with option two. Um, we feel like that's a more economical route. Uh, we may be able to partner with, um, other organizations to help, um, make a dent in that thirty-one thousand dollars as well.
Perfect. Council, entertain a motion at this time to a top.
To move?
Our mayor holds.
Approved.
Have a motion. No, you want to excuse Jim.
Okay.
In a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion by council?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good, Jim.
Would this be paid out in splash? Not, can't be, but two thousand sixteen with sidewalk, this doesn't stretch to sidewalk improvement.
Hey, you can't blame me for that.
Where would the thirty-one thousand come from?
General.
Would it be good at hotel?
Yes.
General, okay.
So there was some discussion about Chamber and Steve mentioned Hotel Motel. I, I don't think this is Hotel Motel tax qualified.
Actually, uh, our part at Hotel Motel, there is no, uh, there are no limit system.
No, well, it's, uh, other than we've budgeted more for that fund than we have because of the commitment to the DDA, um, and maybe there's funds left. I, I don't know. Sonya Lindsay would have to let us know.
Yeah.
But, but the Chambers Hotel Motel, there has been some mention that the Chamber is gonna help us with this, which is great, but I don't think it's meets the criteria for their portion of Hotel Motel.
Well, that's why I said we may be partnering with some organizations. I'm waiting to find out from them whether or not that's an allowable expense and how much that expense would be. However, the max that the city would have to pay is thirty-one thousand dollars, which is what's presented tonight. So anything that they contribute beyond thirty-one thousand dollars only brings that price tag down for the city.
Well, again, it's my understanding that wouldn't be covered, so if we try to go that route, we just need to verify that.
I would, yes.
Also, um, my first picture of a light post on Main Street, the paper around it was on November the seventh of two thousand and seventeen. So that's when city count, when city halls first made aware that the, well, that's not true. That's when this council first made it aware. That was before Jim was in the office, so it should be coming into focus when that period was. I remember that date, 'cause it was about after I won election on the second day. The only other thing I would like to have is, um, at least discuss is, I'm kind of an aesthetically demanding person, and I have a little bit, even though I know it's a life safety hazard that I believe has been mitigated, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it has.
Okay, so, um, I think that Georgia Power has about sixteen different lights, and, and I don't know how we chose these, but I would really like to see, before we commit to what light we're getting, and I'm sure there'll be prices involved in that, I'd like to see them lit up at night, on our downtown, like a runway.
Yes, sir, understand. Um, so I, I sent all of the different models, um, to city council to review. Um, the one that you have in your packet, yeah, in your email, uh, the one you have in your packet is the one that gives off the most ambient light because it isn't covered by a kind of a crystallized, um, um, globe, and that was a recommendation that Georgia Power gave us to give out more light to be able to, to light the pathway. Um, but I, I can resend that email with all of those, but they provided us the ones that fall within this price range. So-
I didn't see that email. I'm sure I missed it, but I, I did see the one that, it showed the one kind of a colonial style with an LED light that was projected down.
Yes.
That one, that's the only one that I-
I sent it to the parcel properties committee and copied it to the rest of council on that, but I can resend that tonight after this meeting, yes.
So is there a chance we could see them before?
Sure, absolutely. Um, well, so you don't have to vote on a style tonight. What I need for you is to vote to go with this program tonight. All of those styles fall within this thirty-one thousand dollar amount. So we can make that choice at the committee level. I can do that, the choice of the actual light via all city council, but that's not necessarily what we're needing to vote tonight. The, just going with the program and extending the thirty-one thousand is what I need approval or not to approve tonight.
And, and just for clarity, this is, I mean, this is one of the most attractive ones. I don't wanna-
Yes.
-think that I'm saying this because I don't like this light. It's just that I've been, since it'll be lit up at night and, um, downtown, uh, strategy has been so paramount, I'd like to see what they're lit up.
Absolutely.
Sonya, just a quick question as far as the going from five hundred to seven hundred. Is this just auto kind of renewal, and they do the maintenance element?
Yes, they do the maintenance, and so the increase covers bulbs that go out, covers any electrical, covers, you know, fading of the poles, that type of thing. So they just will front that line. And as you're aware, we do not have electricians on staff here. And so I feel more comfortable paying electricians to deal with electricity, um, by this method, this maintenance program than asking our staff to go and deal with electrical components when we are not certified to do that.
I agree with you on that, absolutely.
We'll use the six-figure figure that we're not gonna spend, and we'll use that on something else.
Sonya, this would include your bars for the banners?
Um, it's going to maintain the poles that we currently have, and those already have the bars on there, so they'll just be repainted as well as the base of the pole.
You talked about black.
Yes, yes, black.
Okay, so everybody understand what we're doing here? We're gonna vote on option two. Do you have a motion to approve option two?
And a quick comment, just in, in defense of Jim. Um, when he was city manager, we did initiate a, a revitalization program, um, and that was quickly sort of kind of squashed.
Can you further comment by council?
No, sir.
Okay, this time I'd still entertain that motion to approve option two with thirty-one thousand dollar prepayment to increase our monthly bill to seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, assuming that Georgia Power will include the monthly maintenance.
Well, you made the motion, I made the second.
Yeah. Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, same? Yeah, the motion is carried. We'll move to fire.
Go to Sonya.
Thanks.
Consideration approval to amend public utility franchise tax ordinance.
Ask for, show that I understand.
Part.
Ask for, please make a note.
Councilmember John Vossen statement. Consideration approval to amend public ordinance, utility ordinance tax, number twenty-two-three dash sixteen.
Please, we.
Out of the-
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so every year, the city collects franchise tax from, um, our utility company. So status requesting to make an amendment to Article Six, Public Utility Franchise Tax, Section Seventy-four, one ninety-one. Um, currently the state of Georgia allows a municipality to collect up to five percent on franchise fees. This amendment would include adjusting the compensation in the franchise ordinance from three percent to five percent of the annual gross income received from or on the account of said franchise.
Council, attend a motion to approve resolution, uh, twenty-two-three, no, public utility franchise tax ordinance, twenty-two-three dash sixteen.
Please.
Second.
Second.
Full discussion by council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, same, motion carries. Item number six, open to the end of the year. Consideration approval of resolution twenty-two-three dash twelve for GFA, lead service line amateur grant funding. That sounds like a Kim Gohner thing to me.
Well, yeah, I'm up here then.
And there you go. Thank you, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you'll recall at the June, July tenth council meeting, y'all approved task order number one that I brought before you, authorizing Kim Lee Horn, one of our on-demand engineering services, uh, to assist the city with development and submittal of our service line material inventory that is due prior to the EPA mandated deadline of October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. This task order also authorized Kim Lee Horn to finish what the city had started when we filed our notice of intent through JFA's drinking water state revolving funding program for assistance in paying for this program. Uh, we were tentatively awarded sixty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars through JFA, and we do now need to submit the official application, which, uh, provides all the information about what we're doing. Kim Lee Horn is working on that. They are ready to submit this on our behalf. And there is one additional item that we must take care of before we do that. Um, excuse me. So tonight I am asking y'all to adopt resolution twenty-three dash twelve, which is attached in your packet this evening, which commits, uh, funding over and above any amount that the city may be officially awarded through JFA to ensure that our service line inventory is able to be completed. Now it is possible that we will be awarded additional funding over the sixty-three thousand and some change that we have been tentatively awarded. Um, it depends on, you know, they've made lots of awards, tentative awards to communities all across the state of Georgia, and some of those communities are not going to follow through with that. Some of them will. They may find some additional funding, and so our hope is that we will actually get more than this awarded amount. But should it take more than whatever we are awarded, then I am asking council to commit that we will pay what we need to pay in order to complete this mandated service line inventory work.
Thank you. And that's a little open-ended. Do you have any idea, or could you have any idea of how much that, absolutely, could cost the city?
So, so when Kim Lee Horn and I were working on this at the end of March to submit a number, it's hard to say whether this number is going to be realistic or not, but, so just take this and don't get upset. Um, around three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, and that's based on the number of service lines that we have, and that bases a very conservative number of we aren't going to be able to figure out what the service line is. So Josh and his crew have already come up with a game plan. We're, we're providing information to Kim Lee Horn every day about neighborhoods. Um, we are able to rule a lot of areas out simply because of the date that that neighborhood may have been built. If we can provide the ASBILs or some sort of records or building permit information that rules out the possibility of lead having been used in the service line in a higher proportion, then that just, you know, that's that many service lines we don't have to worry about. They are going through and actually working out a system with our distribution group on, hey, when you're working on a service line, let's get a picture, 'cause we do need physical proof. If we're going out and doing something with AMI, as you recall, we got lots of good pictures from Consolidated and from their contractor M and E, and so we are able to rule out even more of those. But there will be some that we have to go back and spot check. The, the number that I gave you, the roughly three hundred and fifty-seven, again, that assumes that we won't be able to either within the time or we just can't get authorization to go out and find something on someone's property, that we may have to do some actual testing, either through lead swabs or the picture testing that they're looking for. I think we will be able to do all of this well under that amount, but I can't tell you that that's not what it's going to cost either.
Better to know upfront, thank you.
Better to know upfront. So the task order with Kim Lee Horn was for sixty thousand dollars. We, we are looking at getting sixty-three thousand. So if we can, the more things we can do in-house, the more things that we can, the better information that we can give to Kim Lee Horn, the better off we are. The thing that is, is not, um, not negotiable is that we must submit this lead service inventory by October the sixteenth of next year, and this is a requirement of pursuing JFA funding is to, is to pass this resolution. And so-
So the timeframe is a year from now, that we will even really begin the process?
Uh, no, so we're doing that now. We are, we're well into it.
So a year from now, when we will know the amount that we are needed to back up?
Um, well, that's a good question. I would say as we get through the noun-
So a year from now, when we will know the amount that we are needed to back up?
Well, that's a good question. I would say as we get through the known information, and that should be in maybe the next three or four months. I anticipate early next year is when we're going to know, hey, it's not going to cut what we've been awarded. We may need some additional funding about that.
So sources for this, obviously, we're getting ready to start putting money in our capital improvement plan. I'm guessing would that meet the criteria? Even though we wouldn't be able to accumulate much in a year, we also have enterprise fund. And I'm guessing squash dollars would also be eligible since we have included infrastructure in our squash dollars. Is that all true?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I believe that we have.
Splash funds will let me.
I believe we have the money in the enterprise fund to cover any overages. But I have to come before you and tell you that, you know, I don't really know how much it's going to cost, because that's very information-driven.
And just to note, this is an unfunded mandate being pushed down. It's a requirement. And so our hope is that additional grant money will come available for this unfunded mandate that's being required of local governments.
Kim, what did you say is going to be the question?
So by October the sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four, we are required to submit or have submitted our service line inventory. And remember, that's our portion of the line, and that's also the customer's portion of the line. And if any of those services that we cannot provide them an information on by that time, EPA will automatically assume that it's lead. So it behooves us to work quickly, methodically, find as much information as we can. Building records are very, very helpful. We've found a ton of information. All of these newer neighborhoods that are going in, you know, we can automatically rule those out through the use of building permits and things like that. And so I think we're in pretty decent shape. We were very, very conservative when we made our request to JFA because we wanted to ask for as much money as we could possibly get.
Correct.
Good job. Thank you.
So entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash twelve for people lead service line inventory grant funding.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety and Judicial, that would be perfect, too.
Mayor and council, number one, thank you for the investment you continue making, Public Safety. Welcome to the two new officers that are with our department. That was a joy to see this evening. Going through the list of what I have in front of me from our committee meeting, just a couple of updates. Number one, Jeep Fest has coming on, and what an amazing event. I commend the Sheriff's Auxiliary, the Sheriff's Foundation, the sheriff himself, all of our city crews, Public Safety and Public Works. It went really well. We actually debuted a couple of things at that event. Number one is our new ladder truck. So thank you very much, council, for investing in your fire department. Ladder truck is outside for anyone to see after the meeting. We're excited to have it here. We also debuted new interceptors at the event through the police department. So both of those departments are growing with their equipment and their fleet and their personnel. Speaking of the police department, we have a derby coming up, so make sure that you follow that on Facebook. I appreciate the public engagement that the PD is giving through that, all the partnerships they have. And on the backside of this, I have the Chiefs' vehicles. I know that both the Chiefs have gone through and acquired new vehicles for them. One's a little closer to being done than the other, so both of our chiefs will be riding in new vehicles. And then on the municipal work side, judicial side, we have an interpretation service or interpreter service we're looking at to better serve our population. Our diversity is shifting in our community. And as that occurs in those that we serve, the city manager's been very helpful in our staff in not only doing the interpreter service for the municipal court, but also the other departments. And so as our employees engage the community, any language barrier that may be present, we will not eliminate that. And so we're excited to see that come on board in the coming times.
Thank you, sir.
No, they covered it.
For our some properties, Dr. Proctor and John Vossen.
Mayor, George Winton, as once you've seen, we've got our pull track has been installed. We've already had our, what they call our, the, we got another track that's come in that helps the kids learn how to use and ride their bikes. But that'll be installed in a later date, because it actually came in quicker than we thought it would come. And we have to wait for the trail builders to get out. They got to do old grading, you got to get the rollouts so they can get the. We also had Lee Newton put down a new asphalt pad to the bathroom. And we're also looking at doing the brief vamp of electric system. We've got that, we looked at, we do some loft engineering, and hopefully they'll be sitting in the plant soon. The downtown restrooms, we actually got a plan. This is actually going to happen after all these years. So we're very excited about that. And then also, we're also looking at getting the city park, look at, or the duck pond, except by another engineer going to update the park and do our park form, better for our citizens.
Anything else after that, Doc?
There was some construction that went on in Lee Newton Park, I think, the path, we may have already mentioned that. The pro park has made it through the state level A R C funding and is now in the federal funding portion. So that's a huge step forward. If you recall, we didn't make it through the state the last time. And so that's something we've all been working on for a long time. Just to clarify a little bit on what John said on the city park. If you, as you're all requiring for the benefit of, recall, and for the benefit of the public, in our recent strategic planning process, we committed to getting professional input on the use of that park's properties. And that includes ball fields, the duck pond, the bridge, the tennis courts. And we want a, we want a design concept to use those properties and decide how we can best utilize those properties. Just as an aside, we have an impromptu meeting. I've heard compadres at the county today, and we talked about some possibilities of partnering on, not necessarily that property, but possibly that property and also some parts of recreation things that we talked about, which was really exciting to be at the table with them. So I think that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Enterprise funds, Jim Lou and Dr. Proctor.
Committee met on two occasions since our last hit together on the twentieth, August twenty-third and September sixth. Progress continues on the wastewater treatment plant. We will be trying to schedule everybody a visit to go out and look at it. I did a visit myself from a distance. I did not get into the construction site. But I'll tell you, there's a lot of concrete being poured out there. We will, we'll be able to be out there soon. All of the easements are falling into life, continue to fall into life. We should be able to have all that completed soon, and progress is good moving.
So if I may, the master plan is, I'm not necessarily going to say we're close to completion, but it's now, it has become a protective document. So we are now able to evaluate certain specific areas in our city where we may have shortfalls in our infrastructure. And we very well may be taking action on some of those shortfalls in the next few minutes. But sewer plant, as Jim mentioned, we continue to explore the injection mine, which for those, for the benefit of the council and the public, that's our, that's getting our mines back. So injection well, that's again, for the benefit, never been done in the state of Georgia. We're working with EPD to see if we can make that happen so that we'll be able to use that as a storage facility. The well drilling that we had initiated has taken a little bit of, there's a little bit of a delay. There's some political issues at the EPD over allowable, use the word again, variances. Our well choice was a little too close to our stream. But that may be in the next month or so, that they may be laxing those requirements out of the Atlanta office. And hopefully we can move forward with that project. Continue to work on water diversification. There've been some very productive meetings recently with some of our neighbors about the possibility of some long-term additions and possible solutions to our water waters. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, sir. Development local infrastructure, councilmembers Kirk Bradford and John Vossen.
Mayor and council, committee did meet. We discussed a couple of key and critical points. One of those is being that our contracted firm is currently identifying, prioritizing, and helping us identify areas of need, as Dr. Proctor mentioned. And so the master plan coming together is only a master plan for one piece of our infrastructure. As an organization, we have multiple facets. So we're actually addressing all of those through our capital improvement plan and budget that our city manager, Urstadt, will put before us for twenty-twenty-four. You've heard the word grants mentioned multiple times, funding sources mentioned multiple times. We're certainly proud of the staff and the department heads for seeking those. Some of the areas, you know, that have been of interest lately, when you deal with Stigall and Mary, we're looking at infrastructure improvements there for water runoff. And then also, if you'll recall, East Church Street, we had a collapse, we had a failure of infrastructure. And I'm happy to report that that was quickly handled in a very professional manner by not only our staff, but also an outside firm. And the property owner and business owner were very pleased. And they're very thankful for the way the city responded to it. So I thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir. An asset administration, and State Agent Lou.
I think we've pretty much covered just about everything on there. Of course, we're going to get ready for the budget process, and we're going to be looking at insurance. And a couple of things there, some pay scale reviews. We talked about the vacancies, and I think we're all, they're trying to figure out some new ways to fill those, create employees. So I recommend the staff for that, because they really had a hard time getting somebody to fill. Talked about the franchise fees. We had that discussion for the council.
Yeah, I think we're to get access.
Yes. It was passed in the consent agenda for the building.
Thank you all for passing that. That was never recommended by the committee, and I think it'll be a big thing for us.
Very much needed. Thank y'all for the work that y'all did to get that to us.
Inflation technology, councilmembers Kirk Bradford and John Vossen.
Had one meeting, one more vendor. I think we have one more scheduled. No date on that yet that I know of, that I can remember today. But hopefully we can get a recommendation together, present to the council, and fairly quickly, I'm confident we'll be able to turn something around.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Kirk. This time, we're going to enter into executive session for the purposes of personnel and real estate.
Yes, mayor. May I interrupt for one quick second? See if I can embarrass one of our attendees here. I recognize Brandon Hannah, one of our people who decided to serve our city, and appreciate the interest. We also appreciate you showing up for our meeting tonight. And unfortunately, I haven't had the chance to meet you yet, but looking forward to meeting you and looking forward to working for you, working with you for the next several years.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Good deal. Thank you.
So we now stand in the executive session. We're now.
Is it something we can discuss as a budget?
entertain a motion to go into retro session.
Do you have to add a time?
But you have to go ahead, that's what I'm asking.
Well, we'll have two days, three days.
If we, it depends on if we have to send a rollback or not. If we don't roll back, we have to have type of hearings and all that. Can we, can we just add this to the agenda so we can have a quick discussion on it?
Motion to amend the agenda with the addition of the packet presented.
Second.
Motion second to amend the agenda with what?
With the packet presented.
With the packet presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Curious.
Okay.
So staff has reviewed the numbers, and staff is going to recommend doing a rollback.
What is the recommendation?
To do the rollback?
No, I mean, how much? You were just saying to do the rollback.
Correct.
Sixty-six thousand.
Three forty-five.
So if we have permission to rollback, then I will run our ad in the paper to officially adopt our millet rate on October second. So on your top is without the rollback, and on the bottom, it is with rollback. So currently, our millet rate from last year is five point four six seven. With the rollback, it'd be five point two two one.
Five point one, we're.
Five point two two one. Five point two two one.
Question on city manager, with what's being presented, one is referencing a rollback, one is what is current with our millet rate. I believe in previous years, we have had a special call for adopting our millet rate. Is that true?
We, I think last year we did have a special call, but I have reached out to the tax commissioner's office, and we're good with the regular council meeting date.
But with the rollback, we don't have to have any special meetings or call?
It's only when we don't.
Okay. I'll just clarify.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion that we roll back the recommendation of the city manager and the finance director?
To five point.
Point two two one.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to roll back our tax to five point two two one mils. Discussion by council?
Mayor and council, city manager, are you comfortable with the recommendation and motion being made?
Yes, sir.
And budget preparations have been prepared based on the rollback, or that's what you want?
Yes, sir. The intent is, yes.
Full discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Our new tax criteria is five point two two one mils.
We had to talk to you.
Who will advertise that?
Most of the, I think, advertised.
Please, it will be five point two, right?
Make a motion to, to first one hundred.
Motion in the second, motion in the second, all in favor?